All right. Uh, this is, uh, tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Hanson, which is July 22nd, 2021. I'm gonna read into the record the, um, first application in front of us. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM online via video conference on the application of Bracket Engineering, Inc., representing Warren Brown Jr. for a special permit under MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, in Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section 8D and a variance under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section 7B and Section 9B to A through C to allow for demolition and reconstruction of an existing nonconforming single-family home on an existing nonconforming parcel at 1067 Mont Ponton Street, MAP 2, lot 897, Hanson's assessor's map. The property is located in the business zone. Uh, this meeting obviously has been, um, posted, um, and is now in person. Originally it was advertised as, um, video conference. Um, we have advertised what we posted at Virginia on the board outside the town hall.
And agenda's, yeah, that is, yeah.
That it's in person?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so Warren Brown, is he here tonight?
No, yeah, on his behalf. My name is Zach Wasinski, professional engineer of Bracket Engineering.
Okay.
What was your name again?
Uh, Zabri Wasinski.
Okay.
He is a boy.
Okay.
A.S.I.N.S.K.I.
Thank you.
So again, I have the record Zach here on behalf of Warren and Eric Brown. And there is also him this evening. So as mentioned, project site is 1067 Mont Ponton Street, existing single-family house. As you can see on the site plans, uh, this was an interesting project. Existing house straddles the town line between Halifax and Hanson. Has access and house address off of Mont Ponton and Hanson on the lot. Uh, just to give you a little cursory review, um, again, existing developed single-family house lot, bonded by Bow Street to the southwest, Gold Street to the east of us, and Mont Ponton Street to the west of us, surrounded by a single-family house. Uh, the existing lot was created back in 1888, showed up according to them. Uh, the existing house is a, uh, existing single-family structure based on assessors that the town of Hanson had it, um, 1920 Halifax had it, 1928, so pre-dated zoning. Uh, again, 1,000 foot square foot lot, uh, about 7,000 square feet. The, uh, property is in Halifax. The other 3,700 square feet is in Hanson. Uh, so existing four-bedroom house. The applicant is working at raising RAZE and demoing the structure and building a new, more compliant structure on the lot. Uh, we're gonna take the structure, rotate it on the property. So the side yard setbacks, um, will be still nonconforming, but will be increased and conforming from nine feet to nine feet, uh, sorry, from nine feet to 10 feet. Structure will be pushed off of, um, Mont Ponton Street, making it more conforming up to 37 feet. Uh, the structure, lot coverages comply with both towns. Um, on the plan, we do the breakdown in accordance with Hanson's regulations, in accordance with Halifax regulations, and then overall, they comply with both towns and controls with that. Uh, existing onsite subject was, um, updated in 1999 and is being maintained on the lot. Proposed four-bedroom house matches the existing four-bedroom house on the lot. Uh, we believe that the proposed project, uh, will have a positive impact on social and economical community needs by maintaining the single-family house on the lot. Uh, won't impact traffic or safety concerns as we maintain the existing use of the property, uh, not making it any more detrimental by increasing bedrooms on the lot. Uh, won't have any impact on utilities, uh, as they already exist to the parcel. Uh, will improve the character and social structure of the neighborhood by, um, upgrading to an energy-efficient house to the old house whose 1920. Um, won't have any impact on the natural environment, um, as it's already a disturbed lot, and will have a positive fiscal impact as it will maintain a taxable structure in the town. With that, I will turn back over.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that's hearing this?
No. So home loan, who's on last, okay. He's working with that.
Okay.
That's Warren's daughter.
Okay, excellent. Um, so I guess, so you're not, you're not, so the existing structure that's there, um, you're not making it any more nonconforming? In other words, the building envelope is not getting any bigger, you're making it more conforming?
Making it conforming to the side yard setbacks while maintaining what's already there on the lot. So we have an 18-foot setback to the north.
Yep.
We're maintaining 18-foot along the side yard.
Okay.
Currently, right now, it's nine feet on the side.
Yep.
We're increasing that to 10.
Okay.
We're not making it any more nonconforming.
Yep.
And when the front yard will go to 34, 37. So it's making it more.
So you're making it more conforming all the way around?
All the way.
So you're not, so you're looking, so this is a special permit, um, not necessarily a variance?
Correct. Special permit for a supportive finding. After talking with Virginia, we just wanted to cover our basis in case it came up that you have a variance. But under us, we believe that it's a, uh, special permit and a supportive finding to alter something that's over there.
Okay. Any comments by the board, Mr. Perkins?
No, you, you did everything I like to see. You, you increased, uh, the setbacks a little bit where you could, and, uh, the only question I have is, do you, do you have to file in Halifax too?
No, we are gonna let Halifax know. Our understanding is most of the work and most of the structure is in Hanson, so the special permit should cover us with that. We will file with the building department, the building inspector, so they will know about this.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because it's, it's actually in both towns, not just in Hanson, but, uh, I mean, I, I don't see even, even their concern. Like you said, you went from nine feet to 10 feet on the, on the side yard and on the front setback off Gold Street. You, you're still meeting the requirements, so. No, I, I don't have any questions. Looks good to me.
Mr. Buckley?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Friday?
Uh, no, it's good to me.
So I guess the only question is, you said you're gonna, um, depending on our determination tonight, you're gonna run this by the Halifax building inspector?
Sure.
Have you spoke to him about you coming in front of our board and, you know, if you got a positive determination, um, you know, would, would he accept that? Have you spoken to him at all about that?
We spoke with just the planning staff and then explained the situation. Every, I come through here first with you guys and then bring it over to them afterwards.
Okay. All right. Very good. Yeah, and then, I guess, so you said it was an existing four-bedroom?
Sure.
I guess, so these are, these are rough sketches. I see the first floor plan, um, what are, are you doing, not that it's really our concern when I'm bored of hell, but are you, um, doing four-bedrooms up on the future structure?
Yeah, four bedrooms on the second block structure.
Now is the septic gonna be in Hanson or is it going to be?
It's actually Halifax.
Oh, so that's, yeah. All right. Very good. All right. So, um, I mean, seems pretty cut and dry to me. I guess, um, you know, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor to, um...
He'll, he has to withdraw the variance without prejudice, because I did put it in the hearing notes.
Okay.
Did I put it in there?
Is there an application for variance as well?
It's on the, I believe it's on the hearing notes.
I see special permit.
Special permit, I didn't put variance?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, in, oh, yeah, it is in the second line here, end of variance. So, would you like?
Yes, I do. The variance request without prejudice?
Please.
So on behalf of the applicant, Zach Wasinski requests a, a, without removal of the variance request without prejudice.
Okay. Do I, do I have to put a motion on the floor of that?
To accept it.
Yeah, okay. So I put a motion on the floor to accept his withdrawal of the variance on 1067 Mont Ponton Street, is that what it is?
Yes.
Um, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Um, any discussion? All right, so I'll bring it to a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The vote carries. So, secondly, um, I put a motion on the floor to approve the special permit at 1067 Main Street, uh, for a raise and rebuild. Um, do I raise second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? I'm gonna bring it to a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Vote carries.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. All right. Um, the 7:30 meeting, uh, for the, uh, 965, 999 Main Street. I'm gonna read the, uh, notice into the record. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on March 9th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The Hanson Middle School, the chap, under MGL Chapter 48, and the application of Egan Development for a special permit and site plan approval to allow for the demolition of the existing house and commercial building and the construction of two three-story mixed residential, commercial buildings. Building one having three first-floor commercial units, 14 one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom units. Building two having three first-floor commercial units, 10 one-bedroom units, three one-plus bedroom units, and 10 two-bedroom units, as well as associated site improvements and related signage at Station Landing, 965 and 999 Main Street, MAP 42, blocks nine and 10, Hanson's assessor's map. Property is located in the flexible overlay zone. I just wanted to start out, um, I'm gonna recuse myself from this meeting. Um, I have no, um, professional or financial interest in this project, but I think, um, you know, I do know Mr. Egan to an extent. So at this time, I think, um, I'm gonna recuse. We have enough board members to, um, you know, carry a vote tonight. I'm gonna let our vice chair, uh, Mr. Per- Perkins, um, run the meeting, and I'm gonna step out. Good?
All right. Virginia, do you know if we have any, anything new from building inspector, anyone?
No, no comments, no. Just the, uh, the, um, area, that's it.
Okay. I guess, Mr. Palmyra, you wanna just run through? We'll go through all the review real quick.
Mr. Chairman.
Just line item by line item, we'll just, doesn't have to be too in-depth, but...
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. Does the board have, have the three members of the board sat on all the hearings at which testimony was given?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you.
The first hearing, I don't believe I was in attendance, but the last one we just had, I was.
Remote, like remote, remember? But May, May 11th. Was it, was it a Zoom? Yes, it was.
May 11th was a Zoom meeting. I, I do know Mr. Perkins was present.
Yeah.
It was the...
The one prior to that.
First meeting, I just wasn't sure if, if all three members were present for that meeting.
That one, I don't believe I was.
And no other, no other ultimate has sat, uh, for any of the hearings, correct?
No.
Okay, fine, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Not a problem.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to stand any place?
Yeah, maybe over here, let's, that can be the stage over there.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Peter Palmyra from All Engineers and Land Surveyors. Uh, we performed the peer review on behalf of the Board of Appeals. Uh, we originally, um, submitted a letter, I think it was back in March, maybe, um, view in the initial submittal, we had a number of comments and concerns, and since that time, um, we've been working with the design engineer to resolve, um, the comments we had. A lot of them had to do with stormwater, some of them had to do with details, um, in cross-sections on the plan. Um, all of our previous comments have been addressed, and I submitted a letter to the board today, actually. With the exception of, uh, three or four items, which, um, I know we're going to be getting into, but one of them had to do with whether a special permit was required. Uh, we had pointed out that there was some language in the zoning bylaw regarding the number of units in the structure, um, and I think that was gonna be referred to Town Council. Um, we also, one of the other outstanding items is a landscaping plan. We, um, had requested some additional information be added to the plan as far as the number of plants, species, and so on. So I think it's back in the board's hands as whether they feel that the, uh, the plantings provide enough of a buffer to the butters and whether the size is adequate. I do believe documentation should be provided, um, from the fire department and the water department, that they have reviewed the plans and do approve them. The only outstanding issue I think we have, um, that wasn't on the latest plan we received yesterday, was in addition to, um, requesting information on the lighting, the type of lighting, the location, we had asked for a photometric plan or a, uh, a plan that showed the foot candles on the site that would be emanating from the various fixtures, and I think, um, I don't know whether that information's been received, but I think it's important that it be incorporated into the plan either prior to the vote or possibly made a condition of approval. That's up to the board. Um, I think that's all I have. Um, summarizes my involvement so far. If you have any of the rest, any questions?
No, I, I went through, it looked like, yeah, they had addressed all the concerns. Um, like you said, there was just a few items really up to the board discretion for us to, uh, to make a judgment call.
That's correct.
I appreciate it, Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, do you, do you wanna just real quick, we can talk about the structures containing more than one, not more than eight, drawing units, just with the allowed uses, and we, we went around and around last meeting on it for about probably, most of the meeting we spent talking about that, and...
I understand.
Um, my take on that is it's the flexible overlay. It was intended to allow pretty much anything under the sun. And we kinda have, I think, jurisdiction on if we think it meets the intent of what the uses are allowed in that district. What's your opinion on it?
So, if I may, um, and for the audience and people watching who don't know, we have Brian Winter from Town Council's office. So I understand that you've had some interaction with the applicant's counsel in a lengthy discussion at the last board meeting, but I just sort of, uh, an outcome wasn't reached. You tabled it, uh, so that I would have an opportunity to be here and talk to you about it. Uh, so I wasn't part of that, uh, but I know that you, you've sort of turned it over quite a few times, so, uh, if I could offer sort of, um, uh, sort of where I came into it and my, my perspective on it. Um, so this question came to me, uh, sort of in a vacuum, just to look at it in the abstract, and I was given a copy of the plans and, and the issue was sort of framed for me, and I, uh, just sort of walked around it to get a sense of, of, uh, the ambiguity that the board, uh, might be struggling with and that the applicant has now, uh, addressed in writing. And, um, what, um, uh, I had conveyed through, uh, your chair at the time, and I'll tell you directly, um, was that there's a process for sort of analyzing that, but, uh, just to skip to the punchline, what I haven't ever said, and what I'm not gonna say tonight, is here's the right answer and the other answer's wrong. Uh, that's not the proper analysis. I think the board needs to go through the steps, um, and look at, you know, what's a reasonable interpretation, to resolve an ambiguity, and then try to harmonize these two provisions. So I can walk through the specifics of it, but it sounds like you spent enough time on this that I don't wanna, you know, waste more time on it, just going through that and, you know, all the minutia involved. But essentially, uh, you know, there's two provisions, um, that you've looked at here. One has a number, um, that sort of limits the, the units you can have, another one doesn't. They're in the same section, and yet there seems to be this ambiguity. One has no limitations, says if it's mixed use, you can do it by special permit, the other one has a cap. Now how do you resolve that? And you could go in two different directions here, and, by the way, both of those directions could lead to the same outcome. It's more of a process than it is, um, a prohibition. So if you read the bylaws state that the, uh, the second provision, which doesn't have a limitation on the number of units as long as it's mixed use, means exactly that. That's what it says. And if town meeting in its wisdom wanted to say something else, it certainly could have. So if that's the board's interpretation, that's defensible, that's within the four corners of what's written there, uh, you can do that, and it's, you know, arguably a reasonable way to interpret your bylaw, then a variance wouldn't be required, no extra relief would be required, and you could reach, uh, a vote in this case based on just the application and information provided. If the board sees it the other way and says, well, actually, um, you know, I, I think if town meeting wanted to put the limitation in the first section, where's the evidence that they meant to remove that limitation in the next section? So I'm just playing devil's advocate here for the other position. You could look at that and say, well, if they had a cap, where does it say in this next section that they meant to just have no cap and that it's sort of limitless? So if you, you wanna sort of take it to the absurd, you know, level, you could say, well, that means you could have any number of units, and the only constraint would be just the technical limitations of what the site could carry. So that would be the, the counter argument. Now I can't tell you which one's right, you have to decide which one's more consistent with the intent of your bylaw. So you could go one way or the other. So if you go the second version, then the solution is to ask the applicant to file a variance application. So, uh, your bylaw prohibits use variances, this wouldn't be a use variance, it's dimensional variance. We're talking about number of units on a parcel of land, that's dimensional, and it's not a use. It's still a residential use and a zone that allows residential uses, so it's not a use variance. But that would be the process, and then you have both things in front of you, and you could vote on them, and you would have complete relief granted to the applicant. Now the last thing I, I just wanna mention is that whichever way you go, it's a judgment call. It's something that the board needs to decide fits this case in this application, and really the party that bears the risk is the applicant. So I know you've heard from the applicant at the last meeting, verbally, there was a, uh, discussion with the board, and the applicant has submitted something in writing in this point too, uh, but I don't know if that point was made at the last meeting, that really, if the applicant wants the board to vote on what's in front of it, and maybe, uh, is expressing some reluctance to file another application, you know, due to a different standard or delay, or whatever reason it happens to be, that risk is really on the applicant. Because if the board does ultimately decide to grant relief and it's challenged, it's the applicant that's gonna have to defend that challenge. So I don't know if the applicant chimed in on that point, but you might invite them to, uh, because now that I've given my two cents, um, you might wanna ask the applicant, or give them an opportunity to respond and see if they wanna add anything in light of what I said. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the, uh, the way that I've read it, I think it meets the intent of the bylaw, the way that I, um, that I've read it, and I think that the restrictions of how many units you could have would be dictated by parking, septic design, setbacks, those kinda things. So, I mean, that's just, that's my opinion, I think that it meets the intent of the bylaw for that particular district, which is the flexible overlay. Josh, you getting any comments on just that one item, so we can put it to bed?
I'd have to agree with, agree with you. I think it meets the full intent. If there was meant to be a limitation, it would have been in that section.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, I think if we're gonna do anything, it may need to be based on, like you said, based on septic design, parking.
Right, right. So you, you don't feel that it would need a variance, that it's, it meets the intent of the, of the bylaw for the allowed uses for the, okay. All right. As Mr. Winter had said, um, I guess if, if you feel that that variance would be necessary on your part, um, you have the option that you could apply for that, I guess as a, a secondary.
Or a suspenders.
Yeah. If you felt that you needed it. The board doesn't seem to feel like you need it, but...
May I approach Mr.?
Sure.
Should I stand over here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Attorney Barry Crimmens, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Stephen Egan of Egan Development, um, and I appreciate Attorney Winter appearing here tonight to, to give his explanation to the board. Brian and I have known each other for, for a number of years, I have great deal of respect for Attorney Winter and his firm, uh, and I appreciate the way, uh, he approaches these types of issues, whereas, as he said, they can go one of, one of two ways. For all the reasons that I mentioned in my memo, which I, I, I won't belabor this evening, I believe, as this was stated by Mr. Perkins, uh, that the bylaw allows for this use by special permit without a restriction on the number of uses per se, and again, the only restriction being the sort of dimensional requirements such, such as septic system issues, uh, coverage issues, uh, and the like. Uh, we are, we are comfortable with going forward on that basis. We feel comfortable that the only permit that we would need on that basis from this board would be the special permit for the mixed-use development, uh, without the need for variance. Uh, I, I, again, I appreciate Attorney Winter's, uh, explanation of that, and, and I think all things being equal, um, uh, and perhaps if the issue had been addressed, uh, at, at the beginning, maybe we would have thought to apply in the alternative with both the special permit and the variance. I do have to say that there are some, um, issues relative to the variance, uh, that I'm sure the board is familiar with relative to the requirements on the, on the Chapter 48, Section 10, uh, that, um, uh, probably make me lean towards not wanting to add that requirement to this application. So without the labor and the point and without, uh, stealing the feet from the jaws of victory, uh, I think we, we would like to proceed on the basis that, again, the special permit will suffice for our purposes. In addition to the other permits, uh, that we need that were mentioned in Mr. Palmyra's, um, letter, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, and the like, most of which we think, and, and, uh, Mr. Crowe can address those issues as well, most of which we think are, are the types of, of conditions that could be conditions of approval, uh, to the special permit from this board if, if the board were so inclined. So, so with that, uh, I'd like, if we may, uh, both Mr. Crowe, myself, Mr. Egan, as well as my partner, Noriel Tool, can respond to any questions that the members may have as we proceed.
Um, I think we got just a couple of things that came up on the review of the landscape design, um, approval from fire department, water department, and then photometric plan. Maybe Mr. Crowe could speak of those.
Yes, the, uh, company, uh, dealing with for the lighting, they, they, uh, just gave me the lighting details and they've been working on the, uh, applicant's full route of plan. So we could have that on day, so, and I can get that to the board. As far as the, uh, the water and the fire department, we've spoken with them, they're, they haven't given us a letter, but they're set with it, and I think Steve actually spoke to them.
Yeah, Rob, Brian, the fire department called the, uh, end of last week just to say that they've reviewed everything and that they're fine with it, and he will be submitting a letter, but he was leaving on vacation. Uh, but wanted to let me know that they've gone over everything, that they're satisfied with, uh, what we've submitted to them. And I'm sure we can make it a condition that you get that letter and, and once he gets it.
And a lot of the problems said, as long as the fire department's happy with what we've done, you know, then they're good.
Okay.
Met with them through a couple of hours.
All right, so the photometric plan, you think you're gonna have probably within a week or so?
Yeah, probably before the other week, yeah.
Okay.
And there's, there's one, uh, the, uh, septic system. I just got back with you. I had sent it out a couple of weeks ago, and I was expecting that, well, we get, and, uh, anyway, I just received it at 10 o'clock this morning, uh, on the, uh, all but three changes on the plan, so it's nothing major on it, and, uh, it's just, they just want some buoyancy calculation for that. I just have to plug that in, and that's done. And then, uh, it's gonna go back to Jim Donovan to review, and then, um, Gil Vamato can sign it once he gets it back from him. There's no, there's no, um, it's all per Title V, there's no variance required, so...
Okay. And that wasn't DEP approval, that was local approval?
Local approval. In fact, when we started this whole process, when we looked to acquire this property, I must have probably, I, I went with Jim to the DEP to talk about it, and one of the things that we, we had to deal with is, uh, this, this is the existing building right here, and we couldn't use that part of it, of the reserve area.
Right.
And this is, this is the zone to the right, so this is what we had to deal with in that area to begin. So that was a, um, yeah, you were never able to get that, so, we all could deal with it, and, uh, so a couple of the things, um, one of the comments that Peter had made was, uh, I wanted to see the, uh, this is where the snow storage area is going to be from the back here, it was a question I, I hadn't addressed it yet, and so we crosshatched this area behind you. And when I did that, I also, uh, took the snow there and I had to remove a few trees. So I removed the big trees that were covering the area, and just some smaller shrubs, well,
Okay. Open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this? No tickets. All right. Board members? Mr. Pratt, do you have any comments?
Not this time.
Mr. Buckley?
No, I think they addressed any questions that I had last time.
Okay.
Also.
All right. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve a special permit for 965, 999 Main Street for mixed use consisting of two structures for Egan Development LLC with conditions that the board is to obtain some landscape design pictures. The board receives a Fire Department, Water Department approval letters, and that we receive a photometric lighting plan.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote? Mr. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here we go. Eight o'clock. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 22, 2021, at 8:00 PM at the Hanson Town Hall on the application of Michael Curtin, represented by Jay Rollins, Esquire, for an appeal under Section 13 MGL, Chapter 48, to reverse the revocation of building permit R-21-0081 issued by the Building Commissioner for 01 Poncy Street, Map 7, Lot 1634, Hanson Assessor's map. Mr. Rollins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Our engineer, I believe, should be walking in shortly, but I'll do the best I can to kind of talk to you about.
Give me one second.
Yeah.
I meant to read this. This is from Kerry Glass, the Building Inspector.
Yes.
He says, "I've seen the petition for Michael Curtin, represented by Mr. Rollins, for an appeal. This office has no concerns regarding this proposal."
Meaning regarding the appeal?
I'm not really, I'm not quite sure what he means.
Okay, okay. I know, I actually think at the time, the Building Inspector was someone different.
Yes.
The revocation, this is our engineer, Azu Antara. He's here as well to talk to you a little bit about the plans, but I can certainly start. He's much more versed in the engineering part than me, so he can finish. But what we did submit to you all were some plans drawn by our engineer. And again, he'll fill you in on how he came to be, or these boundary lines came to be based on his plans. But he did utilize some surveys, which indicated that this parcel is actually in a Residence A district. To give you a little bit of background before he kind of fills you in, there's actually two separate issues we have with the revocation of the building permit. So one of the issues is kind of a practicality issue, just a common sense type issue. And then the other issue is an interpretation of the law, which I'm sure your attorney has talked to you about. You know, you can sometimes go a variety of ways. And the Appeals Court of the SGC hasn't fully weighed in on the particular issue that I'm gonna point out. But as it relates to the practicality, at some point, this is back. What year was it when you actually purchased it?
About two years ago.
Okay. So this property was actually owned by the town. The town had taken it in tax title and was auctioning it off. So I actually have some exhibits that my client provided me today that I didn't have an opportunity to provide to the board before. But we have five members here today, correct? So.
We have four.
Four in the town. Oh, okay. There's, can we share one, possibly?
Yeah, absolutely.
You guys wanna?
All right, give him the stuff.
Yeah, he should definitely look at it.
All right, and he can share this one.
Got it? Okay.
I'll take one.
You'll take one for the?
File, thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, so this is just the beginning. This is part of that practical aspect of this. This is the advertisement from the town relative to the auction. And as you can clearly see, that some of the parcels were delineated as business zones. Some weren't, right? And the parcel that was actually purchased that's in question here is the 7,187 square feet. So that's just pointing out how the town was advertising this particular parcel. Then when you turn to the next page.
Can I ask you one second?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the parcels here. You said 7,000 what?
Yeah, it's up at the top, H2, 7,187. It's right under where it says business zone for.
I can show.
Yeah, I can point it out.
Oh, okay, this one up here.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Yep.
So they advertise H1, obviously say business zone, right? That obviously makes it more valuable, I suppose. Or at least that was the theory of the auctioneer. But the next one certainly is not delineated in that way. But then moving on to the next page, just relative to kind of the history of this parcel as it relates to this town. This parcel has been assessed for my client, and obviously not for the town. The town wasn't paying taxes on it, as a buildable lot, all right? So if it was indeed in the business zone, as indicated in the revocation, I don't know under what circumstance you could look at the zoning bylaws and tell me that that's a buildable business lot. It's not even anywhere close to what a buildable business lot would be. So this letter here is from your assessor, just indicating how it's been taxed, the type of lot that it's been indicated as. Then when you go to the next page, you'll actually see my client's tax bill. If you look in the upper left-hand corner, Class 1, your assessor classes residential, open space, commercial, industrial. Class 1 is residential. He's been classed as residential, all right? And his, obviously, his tax rate has been based on the valuation given by the assessor as a residential property. And then you'll just see his property cards, which again indicate that this has always been classified as both a buildable and residential lot, all right? So when my client initially applied for the building permit, it was about a year ago. Obviously, the pandemic hit. None of us expected what happened, and no one made a decision on that. So what we did is, we simply submitted a letter to the Building Inspector, just said, hey, what's your decision on the building permit? He agreed. He said it was a grandfathered lot. Go ahead, start your construction. So he started his construction. It's my understanding, and I think I've submitted it in the information that I've provided to the board with my client's application. And I believe I can point to what exhibit was. You all have it. At some point thereafter, after construction had already commenced, and after there had been an indication that this was a grandfathered lot that he was building on, the town or the Building Inspector received a letter. I'm not sure who specifically that individual is. I don't know if they're in a butter. I don't know what their standing is in the matter. It doesn't indicate any of that. But it is a letter to him basically saying, this is a business zone. So based on that, we're asking that you revoke the building permit. Again, I have no idea as to the standing of the individual. I don't know anything about the individual. So I can't speak to anything that was said in there. Thereafter, I can only assume based on that letter, there was this revocation. So going back now to that practical part, where this has always been considered residential, I would probably refer you to my engineer, who can indicate the lines, that he's actually used some of the maps that you all have on your, is it the town assessor's website?
Well, the town, the town we're planning.
Okay. And I believe I've included this plan in your packet. But there are actual plans that you all have that say this is a Residence A. So forget about, you know, any legal argument. From a practical perspective, the town has always considered this a residential property, all right? I think the town considered it residential at the time they auctioned it off. I don't think they ever thought there was gonna be a 7,187 square foot business there. I think the town has taxed it as buildable and residential. And I think it's always been intended to be a small residential lot. I would probably defer a little bit if Azu, if you want to show them kind of how the plans work out.
May I interrupt for one second before we go forward?
Yeah.
So at these tax-taking auctions, you know, that tax bill is 2021's tax bill, am I correct?
I believe it is, yes.
So at the time of 2019, what was the assessed value then? Do you have that tax bill? Do you have that tax bill?
Is that included in that?
It's the, yeah, it's the BCA. It's 130,000.
Yeah, sure, but it's prepaid. It's prepaid for two years.
Yeah, it was 130,000, it's 135,000 now.
Do you have those? Not that that matters so much in terms from the zoning perspective. We understand the assessor's office.
No, of course. I get it.
I just want to back up for one second. This application came in front of us. Mr. Curt, when did you come in front of us?
I think about a year ago, 2020.
2020. So this, just to back up before you got involved. This application came in front of us. He had come at the time, I don't recall if you had an engineer, but you had brought something saying that it was in the Residence District, right?
Yeah.
Land Planning did our, the towns.
Yeah.
Districts.
Yeah.
So it wasn't clear from, you know, if you're looking at a map from a thousand scale, whatever it is, right? It's very difficult to see what it is, right?
Yeah, it is.
So I actually personally, because I understood that he had went to the auction and paid you know, a decent amount of money for it. And besides the fact whether it's grandfathered, that's an issue all by itself.
That's a whole nother.
That's a whole nother thing.
We're talking about the practical.
We're talking about the practical aspect.
The taxation by the town and all of that.
Yes.
And years.
I went down personally to Land Planning and said, listen, let me know what's going on with this. And when I went down to Land Planning, I had gotten this from them.
Yeah.
That said, listen, this is in a business district. At that point in time, when Mr. Curt came back in front of us, I think we gave him the option to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes.
Or we'd make a, put a motion on the floor that night. And I'm not sure how the motion would have carried, but
Right.
but I thought we'd given that opportunity.
Right.
Subsequent to that, I think a year had passed by, and Mr. Curt had made his own determination after he'd come in front of the ZBA.
Right.
Right?
Well, he made a determination on the building permit. He didn't make a determination that you all have purview over.
Well, he made, he knew at the time that we made the determination based on the minutes of the meeting, that it was in the business district.
Yeah.
We can acknowledge that, right?
Well, respectfully, that's the decision of the Building Commissioner.
But he sent him originally to the ZBA?
No, I totally understand. I do.
He went to the Building Commissioner originally, right?
Right.
And said, will you issue me a permit in this lot?
Right.
The Building Commissioner then came, said, no, I'm not gonna issue a permit in that lot. I'm gonna refer you to the ZBA.
Yeah.
He then referred him to the ZBA. He came in front of us.
Yeah.
With what he had at the time.
And withdrew, right?
Well, withdrew because I don't think he knew at the time. He didn't have, I don't think he had a proper engineer or an attorney like yourself that was presenting the proper information.
Right.
So I thought I'd do him the courtesy of going out and said, listen, if this is if this is truly a grandfathered lot into the residential district, then I think he's entitled to building permit.
Yeah.
Right? So I went down to Land Planning, and Land Planning said, no, this is actually all encompassed in
In the business.
In the business. And that's where this, so we allowed him to withdraw at that point in time. And then subsequent to that, the Building Commissioner issued him a permit.
Right.
For whatever reason he did, I can't explain that now. But that being said.
Well, it was probably pursuant, so I made a request, because it had been a year. I think he applied for a permit, and it had been almost a year since a decision got made on the building permit. So I wrote him a letter saying, based on my plans, based on my historical research, this particular lot fits within 48, Section 6. And I, that's in the permit issue. So there's probably pursuant to that.
So can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If this was in a business district.
Yep.
Would you think it's owed a building permit?
Yes, I do. That's a legal argument, but yes.
Okay, so I guess that's kind of, so let's just, right now, we're not sure.
Yeah.
Right, so Land Planning, the owner of Designers, let's just stop there, I guess. Let's go, let's go right with the backwards rather than stopping there. Because I think that's really the, you know, you can prove this is a grandfathered lot by doing a title rundown, and that's that, right?
Yeah, it is.
So really, either is a grandfathered lot owed a permit when there's been a district change? And I'm gonna refer that to Town Council, Mr. Winter, for right now. Brian, go ahead.
So would you like me to speak to just that limited issue? Just the change in use with respect to the district change?
Well, I'd like you to speak respective to the district change, assuming it's a grandfathered lot. So we're gonna make an assumption right now that it's a grandfathered lot. Otherwise, it hasn't been proven to watch yet.
So I think you're merging in two ideas.
Okay.
So when you talk about grandfathering, that can mean a whole lot of things.
Yeah.
There's different zoning increases, there's different zoning provisions. The one the applicant has cited in the memo submitted to this board is a specific section of Chapter 48, Section 6.
Okay.
And it speaks to changes in dimensional aspects of zoning, and whether or not they apply to certain lots. It's actually quoted, and I don't know if the patient brought this, but it might be the second page of the memo. "Any increase in area frontage, width, yard, or depth requirements of a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply." Then it continues on, single, two-family, et cetera.
Okay.
What it doesn't say is use.
Okay.
So there are other provisions under 48.6, you're probably familiar with, say, A and R freezes, things like that.
Yes.
That increase use for a period of time.
Yep.
This provision doesn't freeze use. So if there's a zoning change, all these dimensional forms of relief with respect to lot area, width, yard, all the things that are identified there are relevant. Because if the use changes, and a single or two-family use is no longer lawful, there's no protection from that. So that wouldn't protect this lot. So if it's a resident, so now you, this is why you're sort of merging two concepts.
Okay, sorry.
Let me do a heartbreak right here.
Okay.
So if it's a residential lot, and the use has, the lawful use hasn't changed.
Okay.
So it was residential then, and it's residential now, then this section would apply.
Okay.
And it would sort of lawfulize or neutralize these dimensional changes. And it could be entitled to a building permit, because the use is still allowable. If it's in a business district, this provision's not gonna help it. Because it's not a lawful use. So irrespective of dimensional changes, the use isn't allowed. And this section doesn't protect from a change in use.
So 48, I mean, 40 Sections 6, 6.
This is part of it.
Does not protect. So it would protect the dimensional requirements if it was in a residential district, but it does not protect it once there's a district change, because now it's business.
So take your classic example, it goes from 50,000, or 40,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet.
Yep.
That would be an area change, a lot area change. That would be protected, this lot could be protected from a change like that, if it were still a residential use, single or two-family. But if it goes from residential use to a commercial use, to industrial use, to a business use, residential's just not allowed. So it has nothing to do with lot area. It has nothing to do with yard, frontage, side setbacks, any of those other dimensional characteristics. It doesn't, this provision won't protect a lot from a change in use. That's the bottom line. So that brings us back to these maps, and I haven't gotten to this.
Yes, of course.
We'll speak to this, and you'll address it as well with the boards. But, you know, I see two maps that don't agree with each other.
Yes.
So I think we're gonna need some clarification on that. So, and this is, I think, outcome determiner. So before we get to some of the legal aspects of council's arguments now, Mr. Chairman, you raised the point that, you know, the assessors don't make zoning determinations.
Yes.
So we have Black Letter Law on that issue.
Yes.
So, and it even states so in the advertisement, that it's buyer beware. There's a disclaimer right there. So all of those things, while they provide context, and they explain a lot of background as to what, you know, you can rely upon in making your choice, as a pure legal matter, that's not something a court would consider outcome determiner. A court would look to the intent of town meeting. What does the zoning map say? It's presumed to be valid. What if town meeting actually vote? The assessor's records, the funeral cards, all those things aren't gonna carry the day to a judge. Now, I understand why council's raising them, and I understand the argument completely. But they're not outcome determiner. We need to know what town meeting voted, and where this district actually lies. And that really is gonna change the nature of this case.
Okay, so I guess, so I mean... Okay, so, I guess, so I mean, that's the most pertinent thing, I guess, at this point in time. You know, clarification on where that line is.
If I could just.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
So, I completely understand my brother's interpretation of that statute entirely. I would say that I don't believe that interpretation fits within the legislative intent of that statute. And I think there have been subsequent cases, while they haven't been on point for what I'm saying, have made very clear that the intent is to essentially allow a once buildable residential lot to remain that, not at the expense or hardship of a owner of that lot, so long as it's not under common ownership. And I completely agree, and you could not argue otherwise, that use is not included in that. It doesn't say it in that statute. I don't agree that it necessarily means that use can't be protected in that statute. And I think that's I can, and I totally understand my brother's perspective. I would be making the same exact argument and I'd be saying the same exact thing, sitting in issues, because I do sit in issues. But I will say that if you look at the case law, the courts have been apt, in this particular context, to look at what is the intent of that statute. Not, is it depth, width, back, side setbacks, front set? They don't look, they haven't been looking at that in the context of this one statute, what they've looked at. And there's one case, my brother points out about the use. There's one case where it started in a business district and then went into a residential, but there's never been the reverse. And in that case, they talked about the intent of the statute. And they've said, they want to keep small residential lots buildable, right? And so, do I win or lose on that argument? I don't know. Right? I'm not a judge. I make my arguments and then what happens, happens. I completely understand my brother's perspective. But I don't think it's as cut and dry as saying that you disregard the intent of the statute here. Especially in a circumstance where you have this extraneous information. And in addition to that, if your interpretation's accurate, then that's just completely unbuildable. You can't build a business on it, you can't build a residence on it. So the grandfathering would at least protect some use for that lot. Under your circumstance, the town, right, who sold that lot,
Yes.
just sold some completely unbuildable lot, right? And so, it's never been taxed that way, but that's going to be the town's argument, right? We knew it was unbuildable, it's unbuildable. Well, it's never been taxed as unbuildable, so some things don't jive here, right, in terms of what the intent of that statute is supposed to protect. So I don't disagree with the black letter reading of that law at all. But sometimes with statutes, without case law supporting interpretations.
Of course.
Yeah. So that's all I would say to that.
Do you have case law that supports your argument?
Yeah, there's a case on point that says as follows, Preston versus Board of Appeals of Hull. The purpose of general laws, chapter forty-eight, section six, is to freeze and minimize substandard lots, while at the same time protecting landowners from the hardship of not being able to use a once valid residential lot. That's, the Supreme Judicial Court made that finding. Preston v. Board of Appeals of Hull, fifty-one Mass App Court, two thirty-six, act two thirty-nine, two thousand and one case.
Mr. Winter, you, I mean, is that consistent with the application?
It's a seminal case. It's very well known, but it doesn't deal with this issue. It interprets that provision in the context of dimensional changes to a residential lot. And sure, it applies to interpreting that section and applying it to the lot that was subject to that case. But it has nothing to do with whether or not a lot that's been rezoned from residential to a business district is, has the availability of this protection under forty-eight, six. That's, it speaks in general terms, and the quote that he just read is accurate, but it doesn't speak to this case. And there aren't any cases specifically that I'm aware of on this point, and the reason for that is because they don't get litigated very often, because there are other sections of the statute that explicitly talk about use. And when certain actions protect you from a change in your use, and how long you have before your protection expires.
I understand.
So there's black, I mean, I think we understand each other's position very well.
Yes, I understand. We understand.
I understand, so I mean.
You know his position and you know my position, and you guys can decide what you want to do with that information.
Yes, I understand.
That's.
So, I understand. So, so, chapter forty, section six does not explicitly talk about use, but there are other sections, or subsections, shall I say, is that what this?
Subparagraphs.
Subparagraphs that do talk about use and freeze periods, that if you had, say, a grandfathered lot like this, right? That you could come in and get a freeze period on that to protect its use.
And I'm sure the board has seen this, where someone files a perimeter plan and are something to freeze the lot, because they know that a zoning district change is coming down the road. This happens in practice all the time, and there are changes like that received.
Okay, so what you're saying is it's assumed? Would that be a fair argument?
Well, no, it's written.
It's written and assumed, well, I mean, well, we talked about it, it isn't mentioned specifically in chapter forty, section six, but it talks about uses and other paragraphs.
Yeah, so let me explain it a different way. When a statute uses a word in one context and doesn't in the other, that's meaningful. But there are rules of interpretation that we apply, and they're, you know, they're explained in a million different ways in different cases. But one of them is you presume that the legislature knew what it was doing. So if it uses use, the word use in one paragraph, and said, use shall be protected on this, that, and the other thing. And then in a different paragraph, it doesn't say use, but it says lot, area, width, yard, things like that, that's significant.
Gotcha.
And you presume, and the courts will presume, that the legislature knew what it was doing when it protected use in this paragraph and didn't protect it in this paragraph. So if like an A and R or perimeter plan protects the use,
Yeah.
but this provision, the five thousand and fifty provision, doesn't protect it,
Yeah.
that's explicit. That's, you know.
And I guess. I guess my other question is, I mean, not that we expect you guys to know this, but chapter forty, section six, when was that put into law?
Chapter eight oh eight of the Act in nineteen seventy-four.
Nineteen seventy-four.
It's been amended many times.
It's been amended since then many times.
But that provision essentially has carried forward.
All right, so, I mean, I've been talking, I mean, I'm going to, does the board have any questions? Mr. Perkins, do you have any questions?
I do. I have a couple of questions, just to help me clarify what we're talking about. So, assuming that this lot predated zoning, which I think we established it did, predated zoning and has a minimum fifty feet of frontage, five thousand square feet of area, and was never held in common ownership. Is it still, granted, it was changed to, we're going to say, a business district, where residential use is not allowed use. Is it still considered and classified as a true grandfathered lot? It just cannot be issued a building permit at this time because it's in a business district. And say that were to get changed back to a residential district, would it be owed a permit?
Yes, it absolutely could.
Well, I mean, that's.
Well, if it's lawful under zoning, then it's lawful under zoning, no one would even need to be here. So if it gets changed back to Go ahead.
My question was, if that lot were to meet the grandfathering provisions and it were to be changed back to a residential district where an allowed use would be for a single or two-family, would that be owed a permit as a law? I mean, my guess would say yes, because it wasn't held in common ownership, it meets the requirements, and now it's just so, I guess it's still classified as a grandfathered lot, but it can't be issued a building permit, because it's not in a district that's in allowed use.
Not lawful use.
But if that were to be changed back.
Then it would be a lawful use. And dimensionally, it would be lawful.
So that's kind of backing, your thinking is almost exactly the argument I'm making without the I think my brother sees, that's pretty much what I'm saying, right? I mean, yes. And that's why I'm saying the legislature intended for you to be able to build on this, based on that, but that's, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
So I think, oh, is your engineer still here?
He had to go to the bathroom.
Okay. So, well, I mean, I think the most important thing, you know, if I was coming in front of the board, right? I wouldn't look at our maps, I would certainly go to the design engineer who laid out the districts in the town of Hampton. And if I was the engineer, I would hash out, is this correct? This is what I'm coming up with? How you come up, like, and figure out who's incorrect? I mean, that's the first step. I mean, even, you know, before you're asking us to make a determination, I mean, geez, you they may go back and forth and say, you know what? This isn't a residential district. Then this is a moot point, right?
It may be, yeah.
I think it is. But I think, you know, I don't think, I mean, I'm not in the position
Yep.
to sit here, I'm not an engineer, I'll pretend to be, I'm not in the position to I know that I went to Land Planning and this is what they came up with, but who knows? I was there for five minutes, they whipped it up, and who knows?
If I could just speak to that point.
Go ahead.
That type of preparation could not happen for a long period of time, because I think the original plan should be held here somewhere, and I don't think this place was open for long periods of time.
Of course.
So, just contextually, we were in the middle of it, that kind of back and forth
I understand.
couldn't have happened. So we utilized, obviously, we utilized a plan that you all advertise as a plan on your website with the same caveats that you put on the they put the same caveats on their plans as this plan does.
Yep.
So there are two conflicting plans, right? And so, I think, you know, it could be a useful exercise.
Of course.
I would maintain my position on the legislative intent, because that's my argument, legally speaking. But I think also, and you all know this, there's also a pragmatic aspect of what you all do, right? There's a practicality to what you all do, when you're making a decision on something like this, that may or may not have to do explicitly with a statute. And that is, what do you do with this lot?
Yeah.
Right? What is this lot going to be? What is, part of your role, right, is to shape the town, right? And to kind of figure out, you know, what things we allow and what things we don't. Sometimes it's based explicitly on a statute, sometimes it's not based on a statute. In the case I heard before me today, there were two possible ways to go, right? So there's always two possible ways to go. And so, part of your decision is also pragmatic. And in my opinion, there's a practicality here too, that what is this then?
Yeah.
Right? If it is business, what business is going to get built there? It's seven thousand square feet.
Yep.
Right? If it is residential, then we know we can build a house there. And we know we have a good builder who owns the lot, who's ready to build a house there. If it's neither of those things, what is it? What is it to the town? What is it to the town's tax rules? What is it? You know, I know you can't explicitly consider those things, but part of, I'm assuming, any decision that's made is some pragmatic practicality. So that's another reason I'm just pointing out some of these practical elements to it too. Because there is a practical aspect to it too, obviously.
I just want to, Mr. Friday, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Buckley?
Well, I would just say, I wouldn't, I feel like he's making it sound like it would be unusable, just because it would be his own business, meaning that you wouldn't be able to build on it. That doesn't mean you still can't use it in some way for other purposes.
Yeah.
You know. You could have like companies that need to pack things there, that have a business and, you know.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially.
Potentially. So, so, yeah, so to circle back to, I guess, what I was originally getting at, I just, I think the most important exercise here, now that June fifteen, things opened back up. And by the way, you know, that other town hall's been closed, but what I was trying to say was, I told Mr. Curt at that time, that Land Planning was open by appointment to the public, and he could have went there and done this exercise. That's what I was trying to say. I know that, well, they hold it. All right. So I think, at this point in time, I mean, if you want the board to put a motion on the floor tonight, we're more than welcome to do that. I would first have your engineer, I know what I have, I know what the board has in front of us, I know where we got this from. Maybe there's a discrepancy, maybe he, but I did, you know, you know, this is, I did my due diligence for him. And and this is what I came up with. So, if you would like us to put a motion on the floor tonight, we're more than happy to do that. I'm going to, is there anybody in the public here that would like to speak on this matter?
If I could.
Please.
My name is Alan Diaz.
What's your address, sir?
One Snow Street, Halifax. I'm not a Hampton resident.
Okay.
But I grew up in that area.
Okay.
And I'm the one that appealed the building permit.
Okay.
All right. Based on the fact that I know back in nineteen sixty-five, that the property was changed from residential to business. And I followed the history of that particular parcel and other parcels in the area. The first auction, no one bid on it, because it's a very small lot, very difficult, but business, I'll agree. I'll agree also, that they do have their grandfathered protection, if it was in fact a single-family lot. But the use is the key issue here. So do we take business zone property that the town meeting back in nineteen sixty-five intended to be businesses, and do we plug houses in there? If that's the case, then these folks should go back to town meeting and say, they'll change that. I mean, do residential houses belong in that area? Probably. Right? But you need a zoning change for that. Now, I think he made a mistake, unfortunately, and I think he needs to go back to town meeting and have that parcel changed. Because it's not an allowable use in the town of Hampton for a residential.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this matter?
My issue actually isn't.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Alita Fleckley. I'm here with my husband, James Fleckley. We live at seven thirty-nine Montfonsin Street, which goes directly across the street from where they're building. We have a well that's at the front of our street. And last, at the last meeting, we understood that the distance from, either it's the sewer to the drainage system, septic system, does not meet that requirement. Hundred feet of requirement.
Okay.
So we have concern of any leakage or anything that's getting into, what is getting into our well.
Understood.
And we want to preserve it. So we assert our concern.
Thank you very much. That is another issue, obviously, and that would be taken up with Board of Health. That is not with the zoning board. But I understand your issue, and there is a hundred-foot setback from wells to septic systems. I acknowledge that, as far as I know. But that is not the ZBA's issue tonight. Was there anybody else? But thank you. Was there anybody else in the audience?
I just have a question.
Which in?
Forty-eight Bridge Street. My name's Arlene Diaz.
Thank you very much.
If he's not going to be allowed to continue construction right now, there's a huge mound of tree stumps. Huge, that covers almost the whole front end of that. Is he going to be allowed to maybe do something with that? Because every day we have to look at that, and it sort of blocks the end of the road. So I know he's right now not able to do anything, but I don't know if there would be some way that he'd be able to do that.
I mean, that's not enforceable by the ZBA.
Okay.
That would be enforceable maybe by the the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building inspector. So, but we can't enforce that. But, but thank you. Was there anybody else? All right, so, I guess the court. Excuse me?
His engineers.
Yes, I, okay, I'm sorry, he was in the, I'm sorry, sir. Did you want him to?
Yeah, can you speak to how you can, because.
He was in the bathroom. Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Aspect Tudu. I am a registered professional land surveyor, and a registered professional engineer in common work.
Okay.
And I've been practicing engineering for the last forty years, forty-two. And and I tell you one thing I like, is the numbers, and I listen to these two guys here. None I know why they make more money than I do.
You're so much smarter.
Hey, can you put that over there, please, because the camera picks it up. Thank you.
So, sorry. So in my next life, I think I will consider doing a training.
You wanna slip that in?
Fair enough.
And I just have a quick question for the two attorneys, because it's also, uh, very informative for me, so that when I go to another town, I can sound like I'm smart.
Okay.
But, you know, so the question I have is, since the law preceded zoning, and nobody prior to zoning, was doing A and R plans, subdivision plans to freeze, for the purposes of freezing zoning?
Yeah.
If the law preceded zoning, wouldn't that sort of stay forever without the, because you didn't have to do an A and R plan or subdivision plan to grandfather use at the time that zoning was originally adopted.
I'm gonna,
I'm just gonna curious, so curious about that.
I'm gonna defer that to, do you want, do you wanna respond to that? Go ahead.
I was gonna say, that's a good question, that if the zoning district change happened before that law was written, is that what you're saying?
No, no, the zoning change came, first of all, the zoning was not adopted by the town, at the time this law was existing as a single-family and a two-family, a lot. It's, I wasn't, so I'm just curious, from that angle, when you didn't have to do a formal plan to freeze zoning, and that law didn't really change, and wasn't owned, uh, contiguous, wasn't held in contiguous ownership. At the time, the zoning was adopted, so that's, that, uh, I'm gonna be like, uh, Peter Falk, uh, in, uh, and what was our show?
I can come on up.
And you'll go like this, you'll take that, we got a lot of questions.
Mr. Winter, you, you can articulate better than I can, do you wanna explain the answer to that question for him?
Respectfully,
Yes.
that's hypothetical, that goes beyond the scope of what's in front of you. You don't need to answer that question, to answer what's in front of you. So I invite you to attend my seminar next week. Yeah, it's very expensive. But, there is an answer to that question, I, I don't wanna make this an academic exercise,
I understand.
about the theory of zoning. Uh, but I would like to hear how you extrapolated from this plan in order to create this plan.
Okay.
Because I think that will educate us.
Okay, no, it would, and like a step, very, very, very. Okay, so, this map, which is basically what we got from your town, right? Um, I didn't, actually, it was only after the fact, after he got denied, uh, by us.
You might have missed this one.
Thank you. After the, um, after the withdrawal or the denial, uh, or rather revocation, that I started looking at my map, right? So that's what I do, yes, it has it, uh, I don't even know if this one has a disclaimer on it. Okay, and, uh,
Just a quick question, was yours from Land Planning Inc.?
Yes, it was, so.
And it says right here.
This one's actually from Land Planning Inc.
It says, uh, map design web, Town of Hanson opens it, and it says, specifically, map to zoning. So, I come to the intersection of our Brick Street in Montponton, this is Montponton. And as you can see, that area, that little sliver, because this, remember, this is a very tiny piece of property.
Right.
This map here, okay, there's a, see, see the scale?
Yeah.
Okay, on a point five, so that's like a one, uh, uh, one inch to twenty-six forty. Right? Because half of the,
Yeah, of course.
half of it's a two thousand fifty-two inch divided by two, right?
Yes.
So, so you know clearly, this is where we are. The yellow, residence egg. So that goes right through here, and see, see that here? It protected that lot. But yeah, that's how we came about.
Yeah.
Okay? So, so that's, that's all.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Winter.
That's how, I just had a question. So this is, I, I've seen this map before, this is the map that's on the website, and zoning map, as it's referred to. Um, when you were working, I assume that you created this?
That is correct.
From this?
No, no, the survey, the, so the lines,
Right.
the, 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 the property lines,
Right.
are based on, on the ground survey.
Right, but you extrapolated from this, and then you're on the ground, and you find it, and you made this.
Yes.
Did you also look at the town meeting votes? And the descriptions that were voted?
I've never done that.
Okay, no, I know, no. This, this isn't a point figures, just so I understand, what was included and what wasn't included?
No, no, no.
So that we understand what we need to look at now.
Yeah, that's important.
Yes, one hundred percent on, on this, no more than less.
So there's missing information.
There is. So, and, and so that, and so that's why I, so we, so the Town of Hanson paved land planning to come up with the district lines and all that, right? And that's why I thought it'd be a great exercise, for you to go with them and figure out, listen, I, this is what I came up with, this is what you have, and where's the misinformation? And maybe like Mr. Winter said, go back to the town minutes and figure out what the intent was. Where were those, um, you know, measurements, and where did they end and where did they start? I really think that's, you know, aside from everything else, I mean, rather, I, I think, you know, a lot of this is, you know, could've been nip, nip, but, you know, at least, this argument could've been, right? Um, and then you could've,
From, from, I'm wondering, from, um, uh, uh, from, uh, Al, Al, uh, what's his name, what, uh, did you see? That, that does, uh, what did I?
Oh, Al Michaels?
Al, I don't know that kind of comment, I mean, I'm telling you,
Yeah.
well, maybe now, but quite frankly, uh, even if, when, when we look at the sketches, that we get lessons on that.
Yes.
You say that the zoning map is all we use. Now, now I can start, and I do, uh, do webinars for surveyors and engineers myself.
Understood.
Maybe I should start telling them too, because, uh, but nobody really, until you have an issue like that.
Yes, understood. So, uh, so obviously, something's inconsistent, and we need to get, we need to fi- figure out what, you know, who, what's wrong? Is this wrong, or is what he has wrong? And I think what makes sense is, is for you to, um, get together with land planning, and at least figure out that point. I mean, and then I think it,
They've actually produced both of them, so I need to know how they went from what you have to what they have here, because it has their name on it.
Exactly, you got it.
So now, now they have two documents that they produced, that don't agree with each other.
Yep, and then,
Maybe the town should need a lot of,
And, and then I guess the last part would be what was approved at town meeting, right?
The town clerk should have the record of the town vote.
Town, you know what I mean, so that should have that, and it should be definitive of what it is. Now, and then at that point in time, maybe you wouldn't even be in front of us right now, or maybe you would, depending on the,
I would still be in front of you, I just,
Maybe.
I know the writing on the wall at the point.
No, but understood, but if they, but if this wasn't a residence district, and the building inspector was willing to issue a permit as of right,
Yep.
then you would not.
Well, that's true, right. It would have never been revoked.
It would never been revoked, so,
That's true.
Mr. Diaz's appeal, or attempt, you know, appeal was based on it was in the business district.
Right.
This is a moot point, Mr., he would've issued the permit, there would've been no appeal, and we wouldn't be here today. So, I think, in my opinion, that needs to be dissected, not even if he, well, well, you're, you know, you're in front of us today, but for the next person, that maybe, that really needs to be figured out. So, would you like us to put a motion on the floor tonight to, um, approve or not approve? Or would you like to dissect this further, and see if you can come up with a definitive line?
I just have one question, so when you were doing, on your end, when you were doing it with land planning, had you discussed with them, like council suggesting, which I think is absolutely on point,
Mm-hmm.
had you talked to them about what the town meeting vote was, when they drew the most recent plans that you looked at?
No, I gave them sixteen thirty-four, uh, map seven. And they said sixteen thirty-four, map seven.
And they just pulled it out.
And they pulled it out, and they gave me this.
I just don't wanna do an exercise, you've already, you know.
I have not, I have not. Go ahead, Mr. Perkins.
I think Mr. Diaz knew when that was changed.
Yes. So it was changed in nineteen sixty-five. It was extended from Diane Avenue up to, um, the property next to, um, where they bought.
So, so you, so you know that it was extended beyond Brick Street nineteen sixty-five?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I had, my zoning maps that I have, okay, do show the fact that it is in a business zone, so, I don't, I've never seen this map, so I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah, it's kind of funky, it's like a little sliver.
Okay, yeah, but, okay. You got, basically, you got an open space and recreation plan, alright, that's really not a zoning map.
I agree.
So, how do you use a zoning map, or a recreation plan map, based on zoning?
No, why does it say zoning, zoning map?
It says zoning, but if you've been in business that long, you're gonna find that, in the Town of Hanson, we have business zones, industrial zones, okay? This is what, this doesn't delineate that type of zones, it, it delineates these particular zones.
Mr. Diaz.
That's not the map that I use.
Mr. Diaz, I can't see, is that an aquifer map?
Yes.
Oh. I can't even see.
It's an open space, it's an open space and recreational.
Okay, it's designed by Hackworks.
Okay.
Alright, I, I do have a copy of this, but, this is not,
Thank you.
this is not a zoning map,
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
that if I was gonna, uh, assist the customer in, I would not go to that.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. I mean, you know, it's, I do see the, now I see the aquifer zones, and I'm looking from here, I didn't pay attention to the map itself. I took it at face value from the engineer, but I do understand, so, um,
Just a point of information.
One more, because we're running over time here, go ahead.
Just a point of information, because it was stated on the record,
Yeah.
about, even though it's not germane to your deliberations,
Mm-hmm.
it was stated, uh, about, because it's, I'm sorry, it's in your minutes, or would know your minutes, about the septic system.
Yeah.
This, I, I actually designed the septic system. And the Board of Health, after doing its own investigations and reviews,
Yeah.
and considering the plan, actually issued a septic permit on the lot.
Thanks.
So it did, it did approve the septic permit.
Alright, well, that's up to Board of Health, if they wanna re-review that, but, uh, the zoning aspect is in front of us tonight. So would you like a continuance to do your due diligence, or do you want us to make a motion on this right now?
Like this.
You okay with doing that? Looking at the town vote?
Check with them, I guess, you know, why do they have this plan that, uh, jugs around that lot?
The only way to know for sure is to look at the town vote, and take the measurements that were voted in, and match them up against both maps. See what we're gonna do there.
I guess, I mean, is that, what we're gonna do?
You wanna take a look at it?
You should.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be,
What?
It's gonna go into August.
Give us one second, what is?
You're looking in, it's a, what? The lock is there, but we're in it, three, August seventeenth.
What time?
Seventeenth.
Okay.
Could I just quickly check?
Yes, go ahead.
It's gonna be more of an engineering point than me at this point.
Yes.
He's just gonna match stuff up, and you've heard my take.
I have, I have. We have.
What time do you guys?
At seven P.M.
It'll be seven. That's a Tuesday, correct?
Right.
So it looks like this is just gonna come down to whether the zoning map line is correct or not, and if you had proved that, you know, it wasn't held in common ownership, and it meets the requirements, and if this does not work out, I would probably try to work on seeing if you can get that rezoned. That would be what I would attempt at, you know? I, I think that probably makes the most sense, if this doesn't check out.
Yeah.
Um, I would probably go that route and see, because it seems, if it is business, it seems kind of spot zoning anyway.
Right.
Um, so, it sounds, it sounds like if, if, you know, you, if you meet the requirements of, of the law, and you get a rezone, it sounds like you still have a, a buildable lot.
And Mr. Curtin, that was, that was my recommendation last year, when this, you know, May town meeting came up, to put it on the agenda, and, because I, you know, I thought that was your best shot at, you know what I mean, so,
I, I got, uh, you know, I was told I should, you know, I, I didn't go around about it the right way, initially applied for the permit first.
Yeah.
I think the problem was, he was advised that he could get a use variance, initially. In one of the letters from the building inspector, it says, apply for a use variance, and I said, Town of Hanson doesn't do use variance, as you can't, right?
That's one, yeah, yeah.
It's one of my exhibits.
Okay.
So I think there was a lot of stuff.
Disconnect, disconnect, it was disconnect.
And, and that's why I'm here trying to talk about the practicality of it,
Understood.
because I understand where my brother's coming from completely, and, but I'm also trying to figure out a way to make this the best scenario.
I mean, Mr. Curtin, that's one thing we're not allowed to issue,
Yeah.
is a use variance, right? We, we're prohibited from issuing use variances, and, and that's why, to me, this is black or white. And that's, and that's why we advised.
So, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing for, uh, zero Brick Street slash zero Montponton Street, uh, for the advocate. Mr. Curtin, to August seventeenth at seven P.M.
And I will second that motion. Discussion?
No, a zoning change, is that a big deal, I mean, to, uh,
We, what, what, what? We're, we're in the middle of a motion, so, any discussion on the motion?
No discussion.
Alright, so, we'll do a roll call vote? Um, Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins? I'm a aye.
I, yeah, I'm still trying.
So, your question was?
Yeah, what's in tail, the zoning change, I mean.
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I, he, he could probably give you some more information on that, but, like I said, I think this is kind of one of those where it is surrounded by residential, um, and that, you know, you may have a good shot at it, but I'm not familiar with that.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I second the motion.
Wait, 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 wait. Sorry, guys, I'm just, you know, if they're agreeing to the extension, and we'll sign it.
We are, I'm just picking the date.
And then we're continuing to that date, right? So we're not gonna close the hearing.
Yeah, well, he already,
We, we just made a motion and voted on it.
We just made a motion.
Wait, I just heard you say close.
No, he motioned.
You mean adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay, I heard you say close.
He did say close, adjourn. But so,
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, one second.
I haven't said close.
He did. Um, so, that was fine with you, I thought you said this,
Seventeenth is fine now.
Okay.
No, no, I was fine with the continuance, I just didn't have the date yet. I was trying to look at another town's agenda.
Okay, so, you made a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
I second that motion, um, roll call vote, Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
Perkins? I'm a aye. You adjourned, so, um,
Yeah, that's, that's,
Yeah, he's right, he wanted to keep it over.
No, 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 anytime.
Hold on, one, one second, you guys, we'll adjourn. Alright, you guys, we're gonna stay for a second.
Alright, back, take your time, and, and, and.
Now you gotta organize your meeting.
Um, well, and then, I'm gonna step out in the hallway. Yeah. I'm gonna step out in the hallway.
And if you're doing a webinar, free webinar for into,
Oh, no.
You gotta, you gotta do it, you gotta get to around three hours.
Alright, so, we'll just, we'll just open the meeting back up, um, to reorganize. We'll open the meeting, open the meeting back up.